My name is Michelle Hillier. I'm from West Branch. I have, actually, I'm sophomore. My oldest son just graduated this year. My question is, Mr. Batchelder. You know, we, going through the high school, we have huge, huge pride at Omaha Heights. You go to the football games on Friday nights, watch my son, your son play. The stands are full. We have community pride, and I think that's mostly why we're all here tonight. My question is, you said if we fire these teachers, they'll sue us.
I don't care.
Maybe, but I don't think a parent in here cares if we lose that money. And I don't think a judge would side with them. But I don't know that. That's your job. But my question is, we're gonna lose a lot of students. And that's sad, because we are a good school district. And minus the children that we lose, my son has two required classes with these teachers that he will not attend. So you're going to, how are you gonna handle that? You gonna have parapros in the library teaching our kids? As a parent, are we all gonna be allowed to sit in that classroom? I mean, you guys really need to think this through, because we're not going away. So, okay, you can't fire them teachers. What happens come August? I'll be sent in that classroom, or he'll be in the library being taught by somebody else. That's on your payroll. Can you afford to lose the students? Can you afford the extra staff?
The process, as I understand it, would be if we relieved all the teachers that wrote the letters who are currently teaching. They could file the tenure claim. And while they're off work, we still have to pay them. And it would probably take the course of a school year before that tenure action would come to a conclusion. With teachers involved, that roughly would cost us about $700,000. Plus, we'd have to hire someone to take their position. So that's additional expense on top of that.
I thought Snyder did away with tenure for teachers for this reason. Our new Board of Rights to Work State.
In some respects, the tenure laws have been lessened. But that provision still applies.
Well, I think, as our school board, you work for our kids. These teachers work for our kids. Ultimately, it's the kids' decision. I had a parent up here tonight that talked about our kids reading Facebook. Your son is my son's age. They're reading this on Facebook. They're, my son contacted Mr. Wildy just to make sure he wouldn't be in one of those classes. They're mad. So how are you gonna have Keegan Hillier walk into Ms. Erickson's class and treat her with respect?
See, that's one of the things I was getting at earlier is when, like I say, the cost to us upfront would be $700,000. Wait, wait, let me explain what I'm getting at here. Because we do need money to run the school district. I mean, there's no doubt about that. I'm not here to protect anybody that's in the wrong. But I, but we have to run the school district. So if we look at the top, $700,000 for a tenure claim if we put these people on, plus the cost of the teachers, or probably, of replacements, were probably over a million dollars. But that's, that's why I'm asking you people when you're talking about pulling your kids out of the school district. If you do that, that's additional money on top. But if you, if we know they're gonna stay here, we've got some money.
Well, like I said, we're all here because we wanna stay here.
You fired your kids in them classes for that school.
You're right, I did say that.
How do you expect us to do that?
I don't. I don't expect you to do that. Look, we're gonna go into that when we, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss that in our closed session. That's, that's what the closed session's gonna address in regards to our attorney's opinion on these issues.
Okay, I have a question.
But these are, these are all the things we have to consider. And I appreciate everyone's thought. We all appreciate your thoughts tonight, because it's going to assist us in making our decisions.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Ludlow. I'm from Rose City. I had absolutely no intention on speaking this evening. I think this is the easiest thing as far as the money goes. Let's do a raise a hand. How many people want the teachers fired and the kids left in the school? Let's, let's all raise our hands. Okay, now, I as one, my children will not go to your school if these teachers are here. So I think that if these parents want these teachers gone, and you're looking at the money part of it, my child will stay if the teacher's gone. My child will not stay if these teachers are here.
Candy County, West Branch, just one quick question. If anybody's been to Crappy School Board meetings, if anybody went to the Save the Pool meeting, we don't have money right now to barely run our bills. Didn't we just take out a loan from First Bank? So I, what, what good is, we can't pay, we're barely in flow right now?
What we wanna do is, 'cause I've been on, on the phone with attorneys for the last two or three days. We've been writing numbers. Is we wanna go in and talk, look at our options as soon as you guys let us. Come back and report to you. These are our options. This is how much each option will cost. And, and we're not talking money here. Not what we are, but we're not really talking money because we don't have any. So we're talking about what are we willing to cut to get them. And, and we want to bring that back to you as soon as we can go into closed session, 'cause not everyone has had the chance to discuss this and to understand, you know, what it is and then we'll report back to you so that you can look at it and think about it for a while like we have to think about it. But we don't want to stop the discussion, but the sooner we can get into closed session, the sooner we can come back.
Well, I just, with, with, like Dick said, it is, we have a certain amount of money per student coming in. And just last year, before any of this happened, the amount of money that was coming in per student, I do believe that caught by leasing? Did it get cut again this year? Okay, it got raised?
No, it changed.
It actually, it came in the front door, and then they pulled it out the back door. So they could say they gave us a raise, but no, it basically was a wash.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, in order, if we decided to sue, if you guys decided or to let the teachers go and we sued, and now we have that cost coming up, are, is the board now gonna have to look at additional cuts to our already broke school system?
Yes, we will.
I'm gonna steal the mic for just for one second. Randy Surline. Dan, when I was EA president, we had a, and even after I was no longer EA president, I dealt with a case with you. And I'm not gonna bring up the facts in that case. But I think, at that point, the question went out was, and was pointed, that tenure cases are running a lot faster than they have in the past. And so when we're looking at maybe a school year, we're probably looking at less than half of a school year. And that's just my knowledge of tenure cases. I do want to also bring up that in that same breath. And I'll be very honest with teachers and community people. Years ago, the tenure commission decided almost 90% for the teachers. Unless my facts are wrong today, they're not deciding that many for the educators. It is one of the things that has happened with that tenure commission. And I, I hope whoever's taking notes, the dual note pattern over there, I still would like, and I, I've been asked this by several people again tonight, the letters that were written, where are they? That's one, okay? What was done to the teacher that had a classroom of kids write a letter to an alleged, at that point, child molester? Talk about being swept under the rug. It wasn't? Are you sure? Okay, what I'm saying is, what happened? What did, what action? And that's, that should be a matter of personnel file. 'Cause these people out here can basically ask for anybody's personnel file in this entire school district. Finally, I wanna address everybody here. As I said, you have a good school district. Don't kill it. Work within the system. Work with these people up here. I got one, two, three, four. I can't speak for the other two. That really do support you. The more kids we lose, the lesser of an education system we will have in this district. I've been here since 1948. I've seen this district get built. And I would hate to see it being torn down and by one person's actions on this board. And it will. These people are to that point. And again, I honestly wonder if you, Mr. Egan, sincerely apologize to these folks up here.
Michelle Morgan again, and I just have a quick question. Now that I've come down a little bit. I wanna know how much it will cost to recall him? Does anybody know how much it's gonna cost us to recall him? 'Cause we're, we are doing that, right? I mean, we're recalling him. If anyone doesn't step down, how much is that gonna cost our community? Does anybody know? It's free to recall him? It doesn't cost anything for the violence and all this other stuff?
To run an election, to run an election, if it's not tied to something else, it is $28? $20,000.
$20,000. Well, Mr. Egan, you can save our community $20,000 by resigning. Please.
Ken? I had been asked, I don't remember, I got a lot of letters, but I was asked a direct question about Mr. Surline and a couple others. I was asked about what happened to the letters. And I sent, I sent the response back, and a lot of people thought, you know, that I was calling their children liars. I was reporting back what I was told. And then I called and said, okay, what's going on? Why am I being called a liar? And everybody went back and started going through their notes and trying to find out what happened. And if you will give Mr. Klein a time, we thought this question might come up. So we, we have researched it, and he's gonna explain what happened.
When the story broke about Mr. Erickson, we anticipated the day that it was gonna break. Knowing that there'd be a lot of questions from students and staff, we had in place a plan to have some counselors, some people from the high school, some people from Surline, our school social workers, go to Rose City the day after the story broke. And they were available for several days after the story broke. They were brought there in case the kids wanted to talk, if Paris wanted to talk, if staff wanted to talk about the issue. We also brought a male teacher from, from Rose City, or I'm sorry, from high school to Rose City that evening, or that day, in case any of the male students were not comfortable talking to a female counselor. In the course of discussing with the staff how best to deal with this, some kids are willing to talk, some kids don't wanna talk, some kids like to write, some kids don't like to write. One of the things that we suggested, that was suggested by the school, by the experts in charge there, was to, if the students chose to that, that day, or any day subsequent to that, if they wanted to share their feelings about what had happened, the story that had just broke, they would be willing to do that during their free writing time, okay? That was, message was delivered to the students in Mrs. Lee's class, because she's, is the writing teacher. The message to write about Mr. Erickson did not come from Mrs. Lee. It came from Mrs. Rutherford, and I believe, perhaps, the teacher from the high school that was, that, you know, was there at the, at Rose City to be on call.
It was, we met as a counseling staff and myself, with all the, we did.
But, but the suggestion to, to talk about their feelings or write about their feelings did not come from, from Mrs. Lee. In the course of our investigation, it came from, you know, the administration consultation with the counselors that we had, ready to meet with the students that day. One of the students during the free writing time asked a question, you know, can we write a letter to Mr. Erickson? And the response was, you, however you wanna express your feelings, you're welcome to do that. But understand that these letters, if you do decide to write something in letter format, it will not be delivered to Mr. Erickson. It cannot be delivered to Mr. Erickson. Following the free writing time, the kids were asked if they wanted to keep what they had written, or if they wanted to turn their letters or writings into the teacher. Those students that chose to turn their writings into the teacher, they were sent to Mrs. Rutherford. She, she looked those over to see if there's anything in there that needed to be, perhaps, reported to the authorities. Seeing nothing there that rose to that level, she at that time shredded the writings from the students. And that was the course of our investigation on that matter.
What, those ones that wrote in their journals were those looked at?
The ones that were, that the students wrote in their journals, I don't believe those were looked at.
Sandy keeps those journals.
Sandy has my journal. And all of our kids have the Sandy Black story, and it comes from Sandy Lee, and there's also a parent in there. There was no counselor in that classroom. You have five or six, seven letters in front of you right now. The parents can look at it. You will have many, many more, because every kid's story is the same.
That she would make sure he got those letters. That dinner, that weekend, there was not a counselor in that classroom at that time. Not a counselor.
Mrs. Rutherford?
I just wanna clarify, I'm Bill Rutherford, Mrs. Ludlow.
Come on, get a microphone.
I just wanna say that I did have reports with, from parents that stated that Ms. Lee had said certain things in her class. And that, I looked into that. And I took appropriate action according to our discipline plan. I can't go into anything else with that. It was discussed as a counseling group, rather than have the kids talk about it in class, because the teachers, all staff, were instructed to not talk with students about the subject matter. We did not want the students talking amongst themselves. We used the writing as a way to let them express their feelings, because they were, there quite a few were distraught, upset. The students that came in and asked specifically to write a letter, came into my office. It was a group of students, not just one. And we met as a counseling, myself and a couple of the counselors. And when they asked if they could write letters to Mr. Erickson, we told them, if that's a way that you want to express yourself, that is fine, but nothing can be given to Mr. Erickson due to the fact that that was a court decision. And we told the students that, at that time. As far as writing in their journal, I, what the directions were given at the beginning were to have the kids do a free write. They could choose to keep their papers or turn them in. I was collecting all papers that were turned in.
So you were in the classroom when this was happening? So you were in the classroom and Ms. Lee asked the students to write the letter?
Not at real. And neither were counselors. And I'll be very honest, that day, there were, the counselors were very, very busy with individuals or groups of students, as was I. And...
Ms. Graves, I believe, was in there with the students at this time. Ms. Graves was sobbing for Ms. Zeski. And she went up and showed Ms. Graves the letters, teary-eyed, what wonderful things they had to say. I, I just think that's inappropriate.
And I'm just hearing of that, that part now.
Me and Dixie went too.
You talked about Ms. Graves? I know that you've talked about...
The letters.
The letters and being teary-eyed. But I don't...
The letters that she asked the students, she asked, right? We all, we wrote letters. We wrote certain statements in there.
Yes, I cannot go into anything more from that.
We did go into the stuff that was...
Yes, yes, yes.
So, I mean, that's my problem. There was no counselor in that room telling these kids to write letters. There was no counselor. Every single kid says the same story, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
Correct. We had, we met, the counselors met with each of the grade levels at the very beginning of the day and spoke to the kids. And then the counselors were working with individual children pretty much throughout the day.
But that's something totally different than what I'm talking about. I mean, that's something totally different than what I'm talking about. I'm talking about our kids were in the classroom with Ms. Lee.
Correct.
And she said, I'm having dinner with Mr. Erickson this week. I said, go ahead and write letters to him, and I will make sure he gives them. And that is what we were all told. I have parents in different grade levels saying the same exact story, and these kids are not lying.
I'm not, I'm not...
I know you're not saying that.
I'm not saying that.
But like saying that, the counselor situation was totally different there.
No, I just wanted to say, that's where the writing came, the writing idea came from.
Okay, and that's fine, but what I'm saying is totally different.
It was crushed. All of them said that, our grandson, because he had Mr. Erickson put a teenager on, and when he found out, he was crushed.
Yeah.
And he did say about her having dinner. And I'm not denying any of the stories of the kids.
Right. And that's where Mr. Money commented. And that's why you got a lot of slack for your reply, because a thorough investigation would be, I would imagine, our kids. Correct? I mean, like, it's different to say that.
I, I don't believe I needed to get a whole lot of statements from the kids, because I didn't have anything contradicting that.
Oh, I know, but I've seen the email from Mr. Money that said that there was a thorough investigation of that.
That's what was reported to me.
Right. And I'm saying that's why you got slack, 'cause us as parents know that that is...
Yeah, that's why I started calling, saying, okay, what's going on?
Right. So that's what I'm saying is, I mean, I don't, the counselors were there. I was, I was in the school, and I was watching the counselors. I'm not saying that. But I'm saying that what she did was absolutely not right. Very inappropriate. And claiming he's innocent is also another problem that we had. It would be discussed with you about him. You agreed, she should have not said that. That's something maybe should take into consideration in your closed session.
And if you don't want the kids to talk about it, why make it a class discussion and writing assignment? That certainly wouldn't make them talk about it.
It was not, and it wasn't to be presented that way. It was a free write time. That's the way it was to be presented.
By the time middle school, like, which aren't the teachers, and you don't want middle school kids to talk about it? You tell them to write about it, and we're not gonna talk about it? Good thing we get them, they will talk about it.
Well, let's not take the cut by itself.
Pam, Pam, what is your name? I know you've been talking about, what is your name? Amber Crainer?
Okay, I'm sorry to have stopped you. But I think people wanted to answer to those questions, and hopefully they clarified it for them. Go ahead.
My name is Andrew Kleinsider, and I'm resident of West Branch. Looking at the money side of things, I know it's not about money. However, in order to do the right thing, it's going to take money to do the right thing, which is money that I don't have. And sitting here, we all understand that. My question, I guess, to the board, or proposition is, is, as I look around here, I see many business owners in this room that support the right side. I, I don't see very many people in here that support the side with Mr. Egan.
Amen.
So my question is, you know, on top of that, I know it's gonna cost money, however, it seems as though we, as a school board and as a school district, of which I have been an employee of at one time, are relying upon the money that we're going to receive from Lansing or from our state in order to fund the school. I understand this is a state-run school and the school board. However, it appears that that money continues to dwindle. I, I don't think, and maybe you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that the people and the business owners, I mean, some people can give money, some, some people cannot give as much money as others can. However, why do we have to continue to rely upon what Lansing's gonna give us? I was a football coach in this district and have, have done that. We've raised money for many different things. And there was many very good businessmen and women in this community that backed and supported us, as I know they do West Branch, Rose City schools, and none of them want to see it close. So I guess my proposition is, is, is there anything else we can do in order to get that money? I mean, it's very overwhelming that if these teachers are, stay as, as teachers in this school district, that many people will remove their kids. And as Mr. Money has said, if we lose 60, that will basically bankrupt us. But how many people in this room and how many business owners, if this board makes a decision to do the right thing and to remove these teachers, will support that? I think there's a statement that comes in, that's coming to me as I'm standing here, and that is, we can all stand around and throw rocks at, at the building, or we can come inside and dig into our own pocketbooks and our own checkbooks and, and make this happen. And to continue to see this, this school district move forward and never have to close their doors, which all of us do not wanna see that happen. However, it appears that if these teachers are left here, it appears as though that's not gonna be an option that I can see. I mean, we can cut everything we can cut and be as basic and basic as we can be. You know, we can cut all extracurriculars. We can cut all, and just have the basics that you need in order to graduate. But that's not what any of us in this room want. I'm very much so a supporter of this community. And it saddens me that, you know, something like this. I guess one other thing that I've got to comment on is, I've seen that this kind of thing has happened before. But like you said, those have been investigated. And, and it seems as though everything that could legally be done, you know, probably was. However, it's finally reached a point ahead now. It's time to deal with this, and it's time to, to remove the sexual predators, to remove these sexual wrongdoings out of our schools. And I believe that you all will do that, excluding these ones I'm not so sure about. However, I guess, what can be done? I know they can bring it to you. Can we have some form of direction as to, if anything like this is, is seen before, what can be done? And what do we, as the people who have seen these things go on, all right? As the people of the community, what can we do to legally to make sure that these things can be, can be dealt with? Would it be stand in the courtroom? Would it be testify? What, what can be done on that behalf? So I guess, that's kinda my proposition to every one of us in here, is if these people are removed, are we, as a community, willing to stand behind this school board? Because essentially, it appears as though that's what Mr. Batchelder is wanting us to do, is to say, if we remove these teachers, we need your support. Well, he said that by saying, will you leave your students in our school? I'm saying that by, will we financially support this school district as business owners, as members of this community? Yes, I know we pay our taxes. However, that's obviously not enough to keep this school going, because we're not getting enough money from Lansing in order for that to happen. So I guess that's kinda my proposition to the board as something to think about as you go into this closed session, and something for each one of us in this room to think about. What can we do, or what will we do, if, if these, the majority of this board does what they want to do? Will we back them? I, I think that's what it seems like they're wanting to know from us, you know, from a money standpoint. You know, from a money standpoint.
Is it okay to speak? My name is Jackie Holly. And I think I heard you earlier say that if you tried to remove the teachers, that they would sue the school. Well, does the school have?
Possibly.
Possibly? Well, does the school have insurance? You guys to fight the teachers or whatever? I mean, you know.
We have an insurance carrier and I'm on the phone with him today to find that out. this is probably something we got to cover in a closed session. So if you will give us a chance to do that, we'll report back and answer any of those questions as soon as we can get into closed session.
And I just want to say, I appreciate you all up here. I respect you. I know Mr. Money, I know this fellow from the courthouse. I don't think I know the rest of you, but I respect you guys. And this fellow, I wouldn't want to be sitting where you're at. I think you must. I'm a professional person and I don't know if this is what you need, but maybe you need to go out in the hall in a group and then come back and resign.
Fire Garba and he didn't sue.
John Young, one more time. Correct me wrong, if I'm wrong, Mr. Bachelder. But was you asking this group if they would be willing to possibly, however the process has to work, add a little bit more onto the taxes if that's what's necessary to make sure that the job that we've discussed here all night is done? If that's the question, then I ask everybody to raise their hand that would do that and support. That may be able to help you with what your decisions are going to be in closed session.
I'm not a video camera person here.
I'm not asking anybody to give out a personal. If they do, I'm, I'm referring to a millage or something of that nature. Okay? I mean, it just depends on how bad the community wants us to go away. It's obvious that the school does not have the money to take care of this situation without something like that or some private contributions to take care of this. Every time we turn around a corner, it gets complicated. In regards to if we had an extra millage for that type of a fund, we can't use millage funds to pay salaries. That would be a reason we wouldn't be able to use that type of. Well, if you was using it to pay court costs, would that be a different thing? Those are types of operational costs, but you know. It's not that these things can't be further explored, but I appreciate the thoughts.
I'm David Burton from West Branch. I've lived here for about the past sixteen years. And I found that it's a pretty good community up here. You know, I come from town Detroit area. You don't get a lot of the people getting together like this and involving themselves with people in the community and backing them and supporting them. You know, until lately, you kind of question, you know, it's like, man, do I still want to, you know, live in this area? Do I want to keep my kids in the school? You know, and after being here tonight and listening to everybody, yeah, I'm pretty sure I do. I'd like to come in and co-experience. I'm taking their stand, you know. You definitely have the support of me. Anybody I know, you can guarantee you have their support too. You have the support of all these people. I won't get on discussion with Mr. Egan because I can't be civil when it comes to that. And you asked if we'd be civil, so. Another thing that I'd also like to know, and it was a good question, like, isn't the school covered for things like this, you know, in case of lawsuits? Or, you know, like she mentioned earlier, Mrs. Holly, about the added insurance?
Okay, Mr. Klein, I said I can answer now. We called and asked and once it gets out, we're not covered as it goes through the tenure commission. We have to pay our own lawyer, right there, right? And then if we lose the case and we get sued in civil court, they will supply a lawyer for us, but we will pay any damages that are awarded if we lose. And I asked, and how much is that? And they said, we don't know. It could be small, it could be huge.
And also, I know it was mentioned about, you know, are there going to be better protocols and screening processes for, you know, future teachers? Present teachers maybe just check more into their background, what they're doing, their interaction with the children?
All teachers, anybody that has anything to do with a school system that involves a student and they are not under the direct supervision at all times of a school employee must get a background check and all school employees must have a background check. It's the law.
Thank you for your time and again, God bless you guys and your son.
Hi, I'm Brooke Windberg from West Branch. I am Mrs. Lee this year. And I will refuse to walk in our work classroom and sit down and do all of those stuff for a period of eight weeks. It won't happen. And for any of those teachers in the future, I will not go in there for another good behavior.
My grandson is over the years in Mr. Erickson's class when this happened and I just got to let him know.
I have a son in Rose City School. And I totally agree with Mrs. Lalo. If they're not terminated, I'm pulling my kid out. I will not deal with this. I don't think we should. And it should be in their contract that if they're associated with a pedophile, dealing with all of our children. If at any time you're in association with a pedophile or supporting a pedophile, you're terminated on the spot. And there shouldn't be an option for that. Why do we have to pay them a salary because of their views? Well, hello, it's our children. They're more important than their views. And if they can't protect them, then they need to be terminated immediately. That should have been done when they sat in court that day. Bye. I don't know why it was not. So that's where I sit on the subject. They're not fired, my kid's not going.